Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming. I would like to call the Melville School District September 21st, 2023 Tax Rate Hearing to Order. If we could please all stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now I'd like to do roll call. Tori Belkey?
Here.
Here. Patrick McElvy?
Present.
Jean Preto?
Here.
Jeff Woolman?
Present.
Grace Wright?
Here.
Scott Hugrich?
Here.
And I'm Peggy Hassler. Okay, if I could get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Okay, communications. I do not have anybody signed up for open period for patron comments. Fiscal responsibility, I believe that's Marshall Prudger, our CFO.
The Board of Education, I'm Marshall Prudger, CFO, and I'm presenting the proposed tax rates. So I've given you a handout at your desk there. So if you can look at that, I'll sort of step through the highlights of this. So if you go to the second page where we've got the proposed tax rates and the four asset classes and the blended rate, you'll see that the blended rate is $3.9680 and the prior year was $3.6784. The difference of that is around 29 cents. So the first question would be, you know, we passed Prop E, why wouldn't that be a 31 cent increase? So you'll see that there's a column for permanent tax levy and the Prop A temporary tax levy. The permanent tax levy amounts that are shown, those are exactly 31 cents higher than the prior year, but the reason the blended rate is only up 29 cents is because your asset classes increased at different rates. So real estate increased at 18.2 percent, commercial increased at 9.5 percent, and so forth. So you've got different amounts that changed that weighted average and therefore since residential increased the most and they had the lowest tax rate, it dropped the blended rate down slightly. But the actual tax rates of the individual classes did increase 31 cents. And when you look at Prop A in that column, you'll notice that they went down just a fraction of a cent. And once again, why did those go down? So the Prop A temporary levy is subject to that 5% AV limitation, whereas the permanent tax levy is not subject to the 5% AV limitation because of the tax ballot. So Prop A went down because our AV went up more than the 5%, so it pushed the tax rate down. So I just thought that's important because it gets very confusing when you're dealing with blended tax rates because it's, you know, a weighted average. So then you'll see then the tax rates below that summarized our tax rates going in each fund. That total is the $3.9680 that ties up above to the same classes. So then when you move on to the next page, all this is, is just a summary of tax rates by fund and then the lower part, tax rates by property class. When you add the Prop A and the final amount of the permanent levy, add those two together, those equal the $3.9680 tax rate that's starred on your sheet. The next page, that's the DESI form called the Estimate of Required Local Taxes, and you'll see a circled amount near the bottom. That's the $3.9680. That's the same tax rate that we've been talking about. That's the DESI form that we have to hand in. Then you go to the next page. That's Form C of the State Auditor Schedule. All the way at the bottom, you'll see circled is a 12 cent amount. That's the amount of our debt service that we levy. So if you go to the following page, on the summary page, that's the summary page of our permanent levy. And if you look at line AA, you'll see that 12 cent amount that represents the amount of debt service that we're levying, which is 12 cents. We promised the community that we would have a voluntary reduction of 12 cents to offset that. And that number is in row F, the current year tax rate ceiling. So when you see the residential amount of $3.5728, that has within that number a 12 cent tax reduction embedded in that number. And last year, we actually showed that number separately as a 12 cent reduction, voluntary reduction. But this year, it automatically gets embedded in this number because, once again, of the tax ballot. That tax ballot permanently sets, it takes away, it permanently makes that voluntary reduction a permanent reduction. So in other words, down the road, we pay off our debt, we don't have that 12 cents anymore. We can no longer increase the 12 cents on the voluntary reduction because it's now permanently embedded. So that's important to know. And then the next page is the tax rates that would be levied. You can look at row F and row J. Those are the tax rates that are levied for the Prop A temporary fund, and that ties to the front pages that we've been talking about. And then the next page is just the assess value summary of year by year. And I've circled amounts there that shows that the residential went up 18% compared to the commercial and personal property lower amounts. So that just gives you some summary information. And then really, we come to the final page and look at the revenue. And circled near the top is the total revenue of 101 million oh fifty. So basically, in fiscal year 24, our revenue from taxes should be about 101.1 million dollars. That's up 19.5 million dollars from last year. And of that 19.5 million dollar increase, 7 million dollars of that increase really goes for normal operating expenses and is generated from the AV increase up to 5%. 7.2 million dollars of that increase is for the Prop E expenses to cover salaries, benefits, some security, and counseling. And then the final 5.3 million dollars of that increase is really part of the 10 million dollars that we're allocating to the HVAC Capital Reserve in fiscal year 24 to cover the 33 million dollars of HVAC replacements that we're going to be making through the summer of 2026. This will avoid a geo bond tax increase and saves 12.1 million dollars of interest expense plus election fees. This part is generated from the revenue that's in excess of that 5% AV increase. And the 12 million dollar savings of interest comes from the fact that we've already got 9 million dollars in the bank. So instead of getting a bond for 33 million, we'd only need a bond for 24 million. And at current interest rates, it would be the interest over 20 years to pay off that bond would amount to 12 million dollars. So that's a significant savings of interest expense, and that's why this is a very good opportunity to be able to cover our HVAC without that interest expense. That's really all I have. Are there questions?
So if we were to keep a geo bond off, we're going to save 12 million dollars of interest over 20 years?
That's correct. If we, yeah. By using this revenue, we can cover the HVAC replacement.
And that'll be through 2026?
Yeah, we should be able to complete the HVAC replacements over the next three summers.
So projected for '25 and '26, is it going to be the same theoretical amount that's going into that capital fund, or is it likely to increase?
It'll change a little bit depending on what our operating budget changes from year to year. But right now, that's my projection.
So assuming 33 million, as you said, and this is five to six million over those three years, the remaining 15 million will come from other capital sources?
Well, right now, what we're doing is we're, of that 10 million dollars that's going into the bucket this year, 5.3 million of that is coming from the AV in excess of 5%. And then the other 4.7 million, we're pulling from operations because we've got a healthy cash reserve.
And that's likely to just be the same for the '25, '24, and '25 years?
Yeah, it'll be, we'll have to evaluate each year how much will be shifted over from operating to capital versus just the natural capital funds. But yeah, in general, that's the plan.
Well, since that's a saving of that much interest and it keeps us from going back for a geo bond in '25, '26, that seems like the prudent way to do this.
It's a very good savings.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
No.
Nothing?
Nope.
All right. I think you did a very good job of explaining all that. I think, I mean, it seems to me common sense would say that we should spend the money as allocated towards HVAC, given all the problems we've had, especially the first day of school with, what, five schools going out in one day?
Right.
So I appreciate all this work and all the calculations and all the studying we've all done to get this far. So, everybody else? All right. If I could please get a motion to set the tax rates for fiscal year 24 by adopting the resolution as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Okay. Now I believe, do you need to talk about B at all for the, do I have to do the?
That's just one of the schedules, part of that.
Part of the schedule, okay. And the public can find those schedules on eboards that are attached. What we're looking at is attached on our eboards. So if I could please get a motion to approve the estimate of required local taxes as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Okay. Thank you. We will adjourn for about three minutes.
You need a motion?
You should.
Yeah, we need a motion to adjourn, I'm sorry. If I could please get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. like to call the Melville School District Board of Education, September 21st, meeting to order. If we could please all stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. And now I'm going to do roll call again in case somebody bolted on us. Tori Belkey?
Here.
Patrick McElvy?
Present.
Jean Preto?
Here.
Jeff Woolman?
Present.
Grace Wright?
Here.
Scott Hugrich?
Here.
And I'm Peggy Hassler. Okay, if I could please get a motion to?
Give him time to say here.
Oh, sorry. Well, I already knew he was here. He told me the last meeting. If I could please get a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Okay, communications. We have a recognition of our students tonight, so I think Oakville is first.
Oak.
Oakville Middle, right?
Yeah.
Sorry. That's what it says on the agenda. So we have Mike Salzman, our principal at Oakville Middle?
Good evening. It's an honor tonight to recognize the outstanding National Junior Honor Society officers. These students represent not only what is best about Oakville Middle School, but what is best about our young people today. They prove through their dedication of National Junior Honor Society that our future is indeed in extremely capable hands. So when I call your name, I want you guys to come up front and be recognized. Sergeant at Arms Alyssa Rakovic.
Historian McKenna Weber. Secretary Isabella Rakovic. Treasurer Emma Miller. Vice President Endy Dvaricich. And President Logan Payne. And Logan has just a few words to tell you guys about our Honor Society.
Hi, my name is Logan Payne. I'm the NJHS president at Oakville Middle School. This year, we will continue our development of the five pillars of NJHS: citizenship, scholarship, leadership, character, and service. Members are split into groups and present a lesson about their assigned pillar and educate one another at our meetings. We also have school-wide donation opportunities, like the hygiene drive, canned food drive, and humane society drive. Some requirements of NJHS include 10 service hours and maintaining excellent academic standing. Here at Oakville Middle School, we are 43 strong in making the world a better place.
Middle School, Kelly Roberts. And is that just Kelly Roberts? Not Jordan?
Yes, me. We would like to honor our National Junior Honor Society officers from Washington Middle to this evening. These eighth grade students have shown leadership over the years at Washington. Not only were they selected to be in National Junior Honor Society, but they were elected by their peers to hold these positions. So we are very proud of all the leadership that they've already displayed, and we are looking forward to a great school year working with them. So when I call your name, if you can come up too. So we have our President Selena Haymore.
Our Vice President Maggie Bailey. Our Secretary Alex Sawyer. Our Treasurer Emma Mueller. Our Historian Mason Fisher. Mason's not here tonight. And then our Public Relations Lana Massan. I did not have our President prepare a speech or anything, so we'd just like to congratulate them. And again, we're looking really forward to working with you guys this school year on many, many leadership opportunities to come.
Good evening. Tonight, we are going to be recognizing Students of the Month. Students of the Month are from the schools. They're nominated by their teachers. And we have first, Washington Middle.
Good evening, school board members, colleagues, and community. My name is Abby Reese. On behalf of Washington Middle School NEA members, we are proud to honor eighth grader Emma Mueller as our Student of the Month. Okay, that's okay. Emma was nominated by Ms. Sarah Toretta Trout, and Sarah had these amazing things to say about Emma. Sarah's with us this evening.
I have been fortunate to have Emma in class for a couple of years now. Emma is a great leader, both in class and around school. She is always willing to help others. She's a quiet leader. She will voluntarily find those students who have been absent from class and seek out ways that she can help them with the work that they missed to make sure that they understand it. Emma helps her peers and her school community and completes tasks with a friendly and humble manner. Her academic work is top notch. She always completes it with care, consideration, and is very thorough. She genuinely loves learning and works very hard in everything she does. I'm incredibly proud to be her teacher and to have her in my class.
Next, we have our teacher from Oakville Middle School.
Good evening, school board, colleagues, communities. My name is Bridget Kelly, and I teach at Oakville Middle School, and I am the building rep for NEA there. Mr. Chris Ramey is with me as well, a fellow NEA teacher. And we are proud this evening to announce our selection as Teagan Nitch. Teagan is an eighth grader at Oakville Middle School and was nominated by seven teachers. Several teachers sent in thoughts about Teagan, and when I asked for the nominations, and a theme began to emerge. She represents ex-
She will voluntarily find those students who have been absent from class and seek out ways that she can help them with the work that they missed to make sure that they understand it. Emma helps her peers and her school community and completes tasks with a friendly and humble manner. Her academic work is top-notch. She always completes it with care, consideration, and is very thorough. She genuinely loves learning and works very hard in everything she does. I'm incredibly proud to be her teacher and to have her in my class.
Next, we have our teacher from Oakville Middle School.
My name is Bridget Kelly, and I teach at Oakville Middle School, and I am the building rep for NEA there. Mr. Chris Ramey is with me as well, a fellow NEA teacher. And we are proud this evening to announce our selection as Teagan Nitch. Teagan is an eighth-grader at Oakville Middle School and was nominated by seven teachers. Several teachers sent in thoughts about Teagan, and when I was asked for nominations, and a theme began to emerge. She represents exactly the kind of kid we all hope to have at OMS. She is kind, she is driven, and she is involved. One teacher wrote, "Teagan is nice to every kid she meets, and you can always count on her to be welcoming and friendly to everyone around her, staff and students alike. She is always keen to help out whenever needed. She is a very conscientious and hard-working student," I've seen that firsthand, I have her in class, "who pays attention to details and asks questions when she needs clarification. She always wants to know the why beyond what's just on the textbook pages." Her advisory teacher observed that. "Teagan is involved in more things than most at our school and excels at them, all with a blend of natural talent and ethic." She participates in 10 after-school activities, including breakout club, track and field, flag football, and NJHS. In addition, she will leave tonight to go to her competitive dance team. Mr. Chris Ramey, her band teacher, wrote that she inspires her band directors and peers with her talent, her work ethic, and her passion for music and the performing arts. For the past two years, Teagan has received gold ratings at the St. Louis All Suburban Solo and Ensemble Festival. She is one of few students to even accomplish this and the only student in OMS band history to do it on two different instruments in two different years, the flute and the oboe." He wrote that, not me. (laughing). Her choir teacher, Mrs. Lacy Cupp, said, "Teagan is a naturally talented musician. When she sings, it is clear that she is in her element and expressing herself with confidence." It was that confidence that allowed her to compete in Oakville's Got Talent, I think Mr. McElvy was there, as not only a sixth-grader but also a seventh-grader, and placed second last year against high-school-age competitors. Mrs. Cupp went on to say that "Teagan has found a graceful balance of poise and composure while still having a love for fun and silliness." Trust me, just ask her to see her Spirit Day costumes, they're pretty great. And one teacher summed it up best, "Her smile brightens the halls of OMS, and she is a joy to have in class." What a delightful young lady for all of us to watch grow and blossom over these last three years, and for myself, her last 14.
Oh, wow.
Thank you so much. We always appreciate this opportunity.
Thank you. Good job, Emma and Teagan.
One, two, three. Okay. That's got the lighting. Trust me. Okay. Awesome.
Don't you wonder why she didn't get the stuff?
Yeah.
Oh, lights.
Oh. Congratulations.
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 Next up, we would like to acknowledge our student advisors to the board. You middle schoolers, pay attention, because this could be another extracurricular activity you guys could all apply to do. This year, Jenna Jobber and Eric Flaster, he wasn't able to be here, he has, I think, a select soccer game. Yeah, select tennis game. And they applied, and their high schools chose them to serve as our student advisors on the Board of Education. So they come to all of our board meetings, and they participate by sharing what's happening at their schools, any problems that they see going on, or they share accolades for other students and things like that. So this is their last meeting of this cycle, and then the next round will, I guess they're actively, to be honest, I don't know the exact procedures at the schools, but they are applying, and then they will be chosen by the schools to come and represent. So we really would like to thank you, Jenna, for your service. You've done an awesome job. You've been dedicated. I think you came to every single meeting, which is notable, and especially when they last till 10:30 at night, and she's still, poor thing's sitting here going. And, but she's done a wonderful job, as has Eric, of representing the student body of their high schools and telling us all of the great activities that are going on. So we appreciate it, and thank you very much. And we have a little certificate party.
All right. All right. One, two, three. Thank you so much, Dr. Teagan.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, I'm gonna do a picture.
So now we're ready. Perfect. Picture of Teagan. Okay. I'll share my picture. This is fun. All right. All right. One, two, three. Thank you so much, Dr. Teagan.
Yes, thank you.
Nine, ten. You're a fun person.
(laughing).
And now, maybe I should have asked you this first. Do you have a report for us? Sorry about that.
It's all right. So, the new school year is beginning, and everyone is bubbling with excitement. It is a busy time, as all the clubs are starting up and having their introduction meetings. Furthermore, planning for homecoming is in full swing. PSATs are coming up, and this year, Jing Zhu has been named a National Merit semifinalist. This means she scored in the top 1%, approximately 13,000 of all students taking the PSAT last fall. Far City softball player Amelia Weiser was named SBLives Missouri High School athlete for the week of September 4th through 10th. Also, band finished third in their division and seventh place overall at the Bands of America Wisconsin Regional. And lastly, we held a voter registration drive in conjunction with the League of Woman Voters this week. Thirty-five students were newly registered voters. This is the largest number we have had registered in the time we have been working with the League of Woman Voters. Also, since this is my last meeting as a student advisor, I would like to mention that it's truly been an honor representing Oakville and my fellow peers. Overall, this has been an amazing experience, and I really enjoyed attending all the meetings. Thank you so much for this wonderful opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jenna. Okay. Moving on to open period for patron comments, and we have no one signed up. So we will move on to number 5A, Student Achievement, Oakville Middle School, with Mike Salzman and Jason Beatt.
Good evening, Board of Education. I'm Mike Salzman. I'm the principal at Oakville Middle School, and this is Dr. Jason Beatt, the Assistant Principal. Tonight, we're going to talk about academic data. We're gonna talk about some plans we have for this school year, and then we're also going to share a few celebrations. So a celebration, I think, needs to start off with students. That's why we're here every day, that's why we do the jobs that we do. And you saw tonight, some wonderful students that represent Oakville Middle School. But this year, we're making a concerted effort to try and recognize all of our students. So every student receives at least one positive referral. That could look like a got-caught ticket, a Student of the Week, or a Student of the Month. We've also worked with Chick-fil-A, so those students will receive a free Chick-fil-A sandwich whenever they're a Student of the Week or Student of the Month. We also have over 20 clubs at Oakville Middle School, which involves almost 300 students. I believe, I'm a firm believer in that, students who participate in after-school activities do better in school. So we offer a variety of clubs, including chess, hiking, athletics, dance, games, and many more.
And it's no surprise, our wonderful students have wonderful parents. So our second celebration tonight is dealing with our Oakville Middle PTO, an outstanding group of parents that help us out at the building immensely. So they've adopted this fundraising-by-selling-experiences model, which has been amazing. So all of the fundraising that our PTO does provides some type of experience for our students to enjoy. Our two biggest, our Fall Festival coming up in a couple of weeks, and our OMS lock-in. Some of you have had children come through our school, and I think those are two highlights of their middle-school career. But with the money that we've been able to raise through these PTO events, we've been able to do a lot around our buildings. You can see a picture of our brand-new outdoor classroom, which our students have been enjoying this fall. We did some beautification projects around the building. Our front circle looks great. And then we've been able to outfit some of our classrooms with brand-new furniture. So we're extremely grateful for the work that our PTO does. And then kind of our staff and our students and our parents, that kind of the third part of, you know, Oakville Middle that makes us go, our engine, if you will, is our staff. So we want to talk a little bit about them tonight. We're extremely grateful for the work that they do. And we've got an overwhelming majority of our staff who's got a master's degree or higher. And we've got a great mix of experience within the building. We've got four first-year teachers this year doing a great job, but then you can see that we've got, you know, over 60% of our teachers have, you know, between 11 and 30 years' experience. So we've got a great mix of experience and a wealth of knowledge. They do a great job. We're very proud of our staff.
So who are our students at Oakville Middle School? This year, we have 645 students enrolled. Last year was around 650. So we have 207 sixth-grade students, 210 seventh-grade, and 218 eighth-grade students. We currently have 44 students taking Algebra I for a high-school credit, and 98 students taking Spanish I for a high-school credit. So we're extremely proud of, almost half of our students are taking Spanish I for a high-school credit in eighth grade. We have about 14% of our students identified as IEP students, another 14 as free and reduced lunch students. About 6% of our students are ELD students, and 7% of our students have been identified as gifted.
So as Mr. Salzman said, one of the things we wanted to do tonight, we're to present some academic data, and kind of what are our plans for this year at Oakville Middle. So we're gonna start in the area of mathematics. So you can see on the screen, these are our iXL benchmarks. iXL is the platform that we use to monitor our students' mathematical achievement over the course of the year. So we've identified math as an area of improvement. You can tell there's what we would say far too much red on those charts, so we've got some plans that we'll talk about, hopefully to address that. But we are very encouraged with one thing in terms of math. If you look at spring of '23, which is where we left the year last year, and fall of '23, which is, you know, the start of this year, we are starting off with almost identical numbers. So we did not see a lot of learning loss over the summer, so we're encouraged that our kids are gonna pick up right where they left off last May. And then our MAP data, again, an area that we'd like to see improve, but there is one focal point up here that we are very proud of, that's our Algebra I EOC scores. The bottom-right-hand chart shows that just about every student at Oakville Middle who took Algebra I scored in that advanced or proficient category. So we're very, very proud of that. In addition, you know, I said that math was an area that we'd like to improve upon, so we do have some plans this year. Starting at the top, our math curriculum has been aligned to our state priority standards. So we're excited that our students, when they perform on that MAP test in the spring, the curriculum that they see throughout the year should be aligned to the state standards that they've deemed to be priority standards. And then collaboration, we're gonna talk a little bit about tonight. Mr. Salzman's gonna talk a little bit about our teaming, but we're very excited about the collaboration that we have in place, not only in our building with our teachers, but with a couple of our other middle schools, and also with Math 314, which is through Washington University. So we have Math 314 coming to us every early release day, working with our math teachers on how to integrate our new mathematic resources, how to just basically dive into some data in order to use best practices. And then also, our teachers have the ability to collaborate with some other middle-school teachers, again, just to talk about what's working in your building, what are you having success with, what are you not, and just to make sure that we're ensuring some best practices in our building. And we're also excited, we have a full-time math interventionist this year who's working with some of our students who are struggling in math.
So looking at our STAR reading scores, and what Dr. Beatt mentioned about our math scores, we're extremely happy that we didn't see that summer loss in STAR reading, too. STAR is a platform we use for our reading scores. So right now, 52% of our students are at or above grade level, and almost 70% of our students are currently on grade level. So we're happy, we just didn't see that big loss from the spring of 2023 to this fall. I'm looking at our MAP data for ELA and Science. Historically, these two areas have been a strength at Oakville Middle School. We're consistently above the state average in ELA and Science, but we know there's room to improve in all of our areas. So our focus this year, the ELA department, they're doing some curriculum writing. Science is reviewing and aligning the curriculum to those state standards. We do have a full-time ELA interventionist, and we are receiving PD on reading across the content areas in October. If you look at our eighth-grade ELA scores for spring of 2022, we had about 53% of our students were proficient or advanced. And then in eighth-grade Science, that same year, about 56% of our students were proficient or advanced. So what are we working on this year? So this year, we implemented true teaming back at Oakville Middle School. And what that means is we have two teams per grade level, about four or five teachers per team, concerned and working with about 100 to 125 students. We haven't had true teaming in about six or seven years. Before, it was one big team, so we'd have 10 to 12 teachers with 220 students, and you'd have a lot of teachers when we would be talking about a student, they didn't even have that student or didn't know who they were. So we made an effort to go back to true teaming this year. Last year, we had 12 core teachers teaching multiple subject grade levels and/or subject areas, and this year, we're down to just two core teachers teaching multiple subjects and zero teachers teaching multiple grade levels. So that's something that we're excited about, and the teachers are as well. And when we talk about PLCs, that really flows into the PLC process, because now our teachers have time to collaborate with their departments during the week. They can plan interdisciplinary units, and then they can talk about those students that are struggling and what interventions we're gonna put in place for them. Thank you.
All right. Thank you guys very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. (applause).
Okay. Next is Washington Middle School, Kelly Roberts and Jordan Williman.
Good evening, Board of Education. My name's Kelly Roberts. I'm the principal at Washington Middle School. And this is Jordan Williman. He is the Assistant Principal at Washington Middle School. We tonight, too, are gonna be just doing an overview of Washington. We have some new data that we would like to share, and then things that we're celebrating and what we are really proud of this coming school year. So the first thing I would like to start off with is talking about our improved language arts scores. So this is from the MAP assessment that we just took in the spring, and so we're incredibly proud. One of our biggest gains was with our eighth-grade cohort. So when they were in seventh grade, the growth that they made from seventh grade to eighth grade, these are now our freshmen in high school, so they increased 15.4 points, and that's for advanced and proficient combined. So that right there is a lot of, it goes to a lot of things that we put in place last year with our interventions, having true time for teachers in content areas to meet and to look at data. So we're really proud of that growth that we saw last year. The second piece, too, to piggyback off that, is our reading achievement data. We gave the STAR benchmark assessment the first two weeks of school in reading, and we had 79.3% of our students at, at, or above typical growth from fall to, fall '22 to fall '23, which is great. The district goal was 65%, and the average, and this is with the secondary schools, was 71.6. So for the first benchmark, we were the highest among the secondaries for that growth from one school year to the next school year. And again, I think that goes to a lot of what we are doing and putting in place with our MTSS and taking a really hard look at data and making those decisions, and really deciding what is it that kids need to know when leaving Washington and going on to high school. So we're really proud of the work that we've been putting into place. This is an overview of our demographics. Not too, too much has changed. One thing that I've mentioned in my previous two presentations is our population does slowly increase. So our enrollment, we are the smallest of the four middle schools, but it slowly has been increasing year after year, and again, we saw a little bit of an increase this year. Our September count was 453. Notable in an increase is our free reduced lunch population, 38%, which is- One thing that I've mentioned in my previous two presentations is our population does slowly increase. So our enrollment, we are the smallest of, of the four middle schools, but it slowly has been increasing year after year. And again, we saw a little bit of an increase this year. Our September count was 453. Notable in an increase is our free reduced lunch population, 38%, which is the highest since I've been there. I was actually pretty surprised with that number. And our EL students, that population continues to increase as well. Newcomers, that's a class that we have for students who are really learning the English language, that continues to increase. So that's something that we are very mindful of and that we celebrate, but making sure that we have that wraparound support at Washington for all of our students.
So just as OMS uses, we use the IXL as our benchmark data assessment tool. And so the bottom graphs here are showing our growth over last school year. So at the beginning of the school year, our first benchmark in the fall was, we had a 26% of our students scoring at proficient or advanced. Our spring, then of last year, was up to 33%. The one at the top is focusing now on our current IXL scores from the fall assessment in which we have 27. So we have the new cohort of sixth graders in our building with eighth grade moving on to high school. So we're optimistic that we'll be able to have the same growth, if not more, with putting all of our interventions in place as well as many other things we're excited about. Some of our plans around math is that we, in our schedule, have the ability to have tier two within the, the scheduled day without taking students out of other classes and taking them away from instruction. So then therefore getting them further behind by missing instruction. We also are working with Math Room Four, of course, and we are, I've worked with Math Room Four in other districts and really the big mindset is, is looking at focusing on students' math identity, how, how do they relate to math, how they see themselves as, as mathematicians, but also working with teachers to really make sure that they're, they're increasing their own skills in terms of their instructional practices. They are also helping us with the implementation of our new curriculum, as OMS mentioned, but also with the implementation of our new resource that we are using, Desmos. So that's been, I know, a big challenge, but also many teachers are excited to be taking it on from last year, when they selected, to now this year and hitting the ground running. Along, along with that, we are doing tier one interventions in the, on schedule. So I know I mentioned that tier two says we know that just like OMS, we're seeing more red than we're likely in mathematics. And so we're really looking at in our, in our teams, what can we do to identify those needs and then be able to teach them in the moment during the school day so that we're not having kids fall further behind.
So continuing on with that, our two focuses, well, academic achievement is a huge focus at Washington and we're really pulling out the, the math piece and also the ELA piece. And again, speaking to our ELA benchmarks from STAR. At the beginning, I talked to you about the 2023-24. Since we've only had one assessment, that's where that is reflective of. But if you would reflect back to 2022 and the 2021 school year, we're already ahead of the game, which is great. So I'm really excited to see what we can now do and what growth we can have this year. But, you know, in our green and our blue is already more than what it was in the previous two years. And again, we really attribute that to the MTSS process and time that we've really put into creating common assessments with our ELA cohorts, unpacking standards, really looking at that data and having those tough conversations as to what is it that, you know, we are doing in the classroom? How can we strengthen our instruction? And also just, you know, celebrating too, when we are meeting these, these milestones. So it's been a lot of hard work, but we're starting to see the beginnings, hopefully, of, of some long-term results.
So I'm very excited to come into Washington, what I think is a, a very exciting time with the flexibility that we have in our schedule. So we have both content and grade level teams meeting during the school day. Our grade level teams are able to meet once a week. They are really focusing on their shared students and looking at that social emotional needs of our students to really respond to what they need with our social emotional interventionists, but also through advisory and other, other things that we have in place to really be able to respond to behaviors, but as well as the, the emotions that our students are coming to our building with that, that affect their, their academics. The content is really focusing on working with MTSS, as Ms. Roberts had mentioned, to be able to look at academic data and look at what are the needs of our students. So had, being able to have them meet two times in a week, I think is major just because it allows for us to really respond to students who need intervention, but also respond to the students who are in need of enrichment. We are also creating a structure within the day to be able to have teachers reteach a tier one intervention so that when students are, are struggling with our priority standards that we've identified, to be able to respond in the moment so that we can help them reach proficiency rather than trying to pull them out of classes and other, other, other ways or have teachers reteach within a class where it may be difficult in a, in a short period of time. So we're hope, very hopeful that our, our wild numbers are increased last, last year, that we'll see a bigger increase this year. And then lastly, our early release days are, are a lot of fun for the students, but it's all, all a lot of intentional work. So we look at panorama and we look at many other data pieces to really kind of divide or create a plan for our students to sit, sit in social emotional circles. They work through lessons on, this most recent one was growth mindset and it was really awesome to see the students connect to the power of yet. That, I had several conversations with students of, of what the word yet meant to them and just having that growth mindset of this is something that I can't do yet. And we have many posters and men rooms now from, from that early release. Other things that we did is, is just kind of celebrating the Washington way of being respectful, responsible and ready. So we, we have team builders and things for students to collaborate on and work on and really implementing the, the things that we want our, our young people, our students to, to see. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Next is 6A federal programs data. Dr. Laurie Tredor Larkin.
Good evening, Board of Education. My name is Laurie Tredor Larkin. I'm the director of Fine Arts and Federal Grants and I am presenting the 23-24 Federal Programs Dashboard this evening. So public schools are eligible to receive federal funds through the Every Student Succeeds Act Consolidated Federal Programs Grant, provided that they complete the grant in EPEGs, which is DUCY's online program. And we have, that is due annually on July 1st. So the Melville School District qualifies for the following title programs. Title I is used to improve basic programs for financial assistance to schools with high numbers and high percentages of children from low-income families to ensure that all children meet the challenging state and academic standards. Federal funds are currently allocated through four statutory formulas that are based primarily on census poverty estimates and the cost of education in each state for Title I. For Title II, we, is for teacher and principal training and recruiting. Within our district, Title II is used primarily for professional development. And then Title III is used for language instruction for limited English proficiency in immigrant students. So this ensures that all children have a fair and equal and significant opportunity to obtain high-quality education. And then Title IV is used for student support and academic achievement. Title IV is intended to improve students' academic achievement, providing all students with access to a well-rounded education, school conditions for learning and the use of technology to improve academic achievement. So this first slide is the federal programs Title I, II, III and IV, all the supports the district receives from the federal government in total. And then this slide shows the total number of funds by program and the year, and by year over the last four years. So we have seen an, an increase in all title grants from last year. Within Title I, again, the purchase, the purpose for Title I is to ensure that all students that are eligible have an opportunity to reach proficiency. We focus heavily on reading services with Title I. Our school, we are school-wide Title I, so all students can benefit from the funding at Beasley, Beerbomb, Forter, and then this year at Trout Wine. As a title school, we, we felt that Trout Wine with the increase in funding and the increase in deprivation count at Trout Wine, and then the academic need was, was a fit for Trout Wine to become a title school. These, so if we look at salaries and benefits, these funds are used for 9.5 reading teachers who work directly with students at the four title schools. We also pay for nine extra paraprofessionals to support those students in reading and math. We look at supplemental materials for reading, math and social emotional learning. And then professional development is also based on those three areas. You will see that there is non-public students, a non-public section here. Non-public students who reside within one of our Title I attendance areas can qualify for these services. The non-public schools are required to apply yearly through DUCY. If you look at Title II, for this year, under salaries, we're paying for two staff members. The instructional innovation and data privacy specialist, who works in the curriculum technology department and coaches teachers. The other salary is for a K-5 instructional coach and these responsibilities include coaching and professional development and both of these salaries align with this funding source. And then as far as purchase services go, we have professional development for staff that includes science, math, multi-tiered systems of support, as you heard from Ms. Roberts before, and then other training for instructional strategies. There is also a non-public section, which you'll also see in Title III and IV. So for Title III, under salaries, we do pay for one ELD coach to assist pre-K and through 12, 12th grade teachers in instructional strategies for multilingual learners. In purchase services, this is for conferences and trainings to support the ELD population. And then we do have supplemental materials that are distributed amongst the 19 buildings for ELD needs. Under parental engagement, we do see a need to engage our multilingual families. So we plan on hosting parent nights with multiple topics this year, such as how the English language program is set up in Melville and sharing strategies parents can use at home to support their students. And then the last category here is for the funding, we have not seen in a few years. This is the immigrant funding. And also, as Ms. Roberts mentioned, our immigrant population has increased over the last four, few years. Mr. Adam Smith will be speaking on this more in his ELD report in November, but our district now qualifies for funding in this area and we will be focusing on purchasing materials for newcomers with these funds. And then through Title IV, the district receives over $30,000 in Title IV, so there are percentage requirements for expenditures. We have at least 20% has to be spent on safe and healthy schools, which we use for the SEL dashboard to help identify the needs of students. And then 20% for well-rounded, which we use for fine art materials for visual art consumables. And then we can spend no more than 15% on technology materials. So we focus in on K-5 online book subscriptions. This year, we've also allocated funding for parental engagement activities, just like Title III. We plan to host parent events with topics such as suicide prevention, internet safety and other allowable topics under the Title IV guidance. All right. So the next funding source is the Elementary and Secondary Emergency Relief Fund, which the federal government was allocated in response to COVID-19. This is the last year for this funding source. So this slide shows the SR3 allocation and the spending categories. One requirement for SR3 was districts must reserve at least 20% of the funds to address learning loss and Melville reserved over 80% towards this requirement. So this next slide shows the budgeting plan for SR3 uses. It's 34 interventionists, two per building, working with students in small groups, focusing in on targeted interventions for student growth, which you heard about at the last, with the last previous school presentations. Additional materials in ELA and math were purchased. So funding is also for teachers to attend data team. An additional funding for school clubs and tutoring is available for teachers who are interested. Then we have transportation also for funded, for funding for students who want to utilize those after-school programs. We also have the social emotional learning support through Chad's Coalition and classroom materials for SEL support. And then finally, we have the technology upgrades for online learning and the HVAC upgrades. So there's no board action required. This was just simply an update for federal programs. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Lots of great information.
Yeah, I think that's the best explanation I've ever had all the time. So I appreciate you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Jean.
Okay. Moving on to transportation data. Dan Gilman.
Good evening, Board of Director, or Board of Education. I'm Dan Gilman, Transportation Director, and I'm here to present on the Transportation Department. Oh, far away. Twice a year, we take student counts. This one was in February. We also do it in the second week of October. We transport about 6,000 kids per day. Obviously, it's a little more. However, these are the numbers from February of last year and February of this year. So we transport everyone. It doesn't matter if they're more than a mile or less than a mile, we transport everyone. So this year, we got, well, last year, we got inspected in the fall of 2022 for a spot inspection by the Highway Patrol. They inspected 30 buses and we scored 100% first-time pass rate. And then in, in April, we did the entire fleet and we also got another 100% pass rate first time. So that's only the third time we've ever done that since I've been here. So it's pretty good. We did purchase five new buses this year. They are on the road right now. They came in earlier than I expected. The ones from last year took about 13 months to get because of the supply chain issues and stuff like that. This year, we got them in about eight months. So those are two of the five that we did purchase. Staffing, everybody knows that there is a bus driver shortage and we're no different than them. We have 73 regular route drivers. We're about 82% of, to what we're supposed to have. We do have four drivers in training, about 10 short of regular bus drivers and nine activity. So we're doing the best we can with this. I do have a plan, if we do get bus drivers in, that we will put some routes together fairly quickly that we've already got identified they need help. Prop E did help. We had a mechanic that didn't retire because of Prop E. We've had some bus drivers not retire because of it, so it actually helped really well. It also kept us competitive with our district, with their neighboring districts such as Fox, Parkway, Lindbergh, stuff like, not, not so much Lindbergh, but because of each contract, but the other districts that actually helped us with it. We are currently covering all of our routes. There's some times it gets a little nervous about it, but we are covering all the routes as best we can. So our best recording tool is word of mouth. That's where we've got most of our applicants from. And believe it or not, it's actually been pretty steady of getting applicants. So that's a positive note. And I want to say thank you for your time and I want to say thank you to the staff of the Transportation Department because they do a great job.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you and thank your staff on behalf of the Board of Education, please. All right. Next up is Prop R update. Marshall Crutcher.
Good evening, Board of Education. I'm Marshall Crutcher, the CFO, and I'm presenting the Prop R report. So annually, we report on our Prop R expenditures. You've got the schedules out there on e-boards. So really, all I'm here to do tonight is just reiterate that we spent about $9.1 million on the targeted items. Eight point, well, 8 million was really our target. So we spent more than what our target was. That's probably going to be the trend going forward as we continue to, you know, just things cost more. So really, I'm just here to answer questions about the report.
Okay. Next up is- Next up is Insurance Renewals and Reports, Marshall Crutcher.
I'm still Marshall Crutcher, still the CFO. I'm presenting now on the insurance report. So if you look at the handout that I've given, page one, that's the existing insurance coverages and rates, monthly rates that our retirees, district, and employees are paying, a number of our participants. So then, if we turn to the second page, with those same number of participants, what are we going to do for next year, fiscal year, calendar year, 2024? Because our insurance plan is on a calendar year. So on the proposal, near the top, you should see a circled number of district rate increase of 6%, and then near the bottom half, there's highlighted coverage changes that show the detailed coverage changes we're proposing in working with the insurance committee. So you can see there's prescription copay changes, deductibles, out-of-pocket maximums, and emergency room copays that are being proposed for changes. All of those show the cost savings estimates, which total $350,000. And then below that number is a $742,000 estimate for the amount of additional revenue from the 6% rate increase. So the total that we're really adding to the self-insurance bucket is around $1.1 million. So we initially had budgeted 2% raise. This is a 6% raise, so when you go over to the right, there's a little circled fiscal year '24 budget adjustment number of $215,000. So really, this just requires an additional $216,000 budget adjustment for this current fiscal year. When we look at these rates, it's important to note that the employee-only and the child rates are unchanged. We tried to do the least impacting way as possible for employees. Also, when you're looking at how do we get more money into the buckets, if you look at the best way of doing this, a 1% rate increase to the employees will put about $14,000 into the bucket, but a 1% district rate increase will put about $125,000 into the bucket. So when we're trying to put money into the bucket, we're better off to do district rate increases to get more bang for our buck and do the coverage changes on the employee side. We can make a lot more impact on the employee side with coverage changes than we can with rate increases. So then, when we go to the next page, it's sort of a historical tracking of revenue, and you'll see the Budget 2024 line item circled in green, $742,000. That's the amount of revenue that we already talked about that we would estimate getting from the 6% increase. Go to the next page of the history of expenses. We look at the Forecast 2023 line item, and in the green shading, it shows that right now, we were projecting 20% claims increase for the calendar year. We're hoping that we'll get there, but right now, we're trending at 28%. But that can come down, but it's not guaranteed to come down. In the Budget 2024 line item, we're initially budgeting an 8% increase, and then with the $350,000 savings that's circled, that would put the expenses at a 6.1% increase next year. But in the end, these things can really vary. These are just really pretty wild estimates, and you can be off by a million or $2 million. That's why we really just have to closely watch it and be prepared to make quick adjustments. When we go to the next page, the lower half on Forecast 2023 line item shows that if we had the 20% claims experience this calendar year, we would have a net loss to the fund balance of $131,000 this year, which would put our fund balance at $9.4 million. And then next year, if we have that 6% claims experience, we would have a net loss of $263,000 and a $9.1 million fund balance. And that's also just estimating a 20% increase on our stop-loss renewal, which we don't get until about Thanksgiving this year. So these are rough projections, and, you know, they can change significantly, but for right now, that's our plan. So I'd like to recommend the district rate increase of 6% and the coverage changes that were outlined.
I do. So historically, the 6% increase and then coupled with the reduction in the coverage, is that typically how it operates from year to year?
Yeah, we're advised by USI to, as a standard typical year, to project 8% increases in claims. I don't know how the future's going to be because, you know, with COVID and the changes that we're seeing this year, some years you have bad experience, some years you have good experience. And like I said, right now, we're at 28%. I don't know where we'll end up at the end of the year, but we're advised by USI as a standard benchmark, use 8% as a normal year.
And obviously, the reduction in coverage is, the rationale behind that is to try and reduce the rate increase.
Try to reduce the claims expense.
The claims expense.
Yeah, the coverage changes will reduce, because the employees, the participants will pay a bigger part of the bill, the district will pay a lower part of the bill. I believe it was, let's see, 2015 was our last rate increase until we got to 2022, so one, two, three, four, five, six, I think six years of no rate increase. We had a 12% increase in 2022, and thank goodness, we had the 22% increase in 2023, and then we'll see what a 6% increase will be for next year. But any time that you increase less than 8% every year, that's a bonus. It's a big bonus.
Yeah, no, you're right. Yeah, okay. And remind me, because I remember us talking about this a little while ago in regards to like a really large increase in claims after we went through that COVID period where there was really nothing, and I guess the assumption, because less people were getting care or going places or canceling things, that changed really what we saw, right?
Yeah, and it was alarming in the first half of the calendar year. That was in 2022. We were still, you know, carrying a large increase. We were up like, you know, 25%.
Right.
And so if you look at the history expense page, you'll see in 2022, by the end of the year, our claims ended up only being 7.9% up. But yet, during the middle of the year, we were up like 25%. So that's why I said, you know, right now, we're up 28%. Are we going to end up up 28%? Are we going to be 15%? And there's a big difference. I mean, that's like a million-dollar swing.
Yeah, thank you.
Do you approve the insurance renewals and report as presented?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Dr. Harris, 70.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Professional Development Report, Dr. Brian Smith.
Good evening, Board of Education. I'm Brian Smith. I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, and I'll be presenting the District Professional Development Report this evening. As a reminder, this is a board review, but no board action is necessarily required. The Professional Development Report is due annually to the board, but we do review it annually, both by the Professional Development Committee as well as by yourself. So it's a piece that we do take pretty seriously, and we want to make sure that we keep the Board of Education up to date every year in the process. So as this, look at this slide here, this is more just a table of contents. It just kind of highlights and drives the conversation from here. So when we first look at our Professional Development Plan, it's important to note that it's aligned to our district's strategic plan. And so, which was, as a reminder for both of you as well as for our audience, that was adopted in September of 2021 and goes through the '25, '26 school year. After that, because I know that that's come up in conversation from time to time, a new plan will be created for the '26, '27 school year and likely would go into the '20, '30, '21 school year. It seems like a far ways away, but especially when you start putting a 3 behind the 20, makes me feel a little bit old. But that being said, you know, that's what our next strategic plan will likely end up looking like. So when we talk about our Professional Development Plan and how do we get here, there's three areas I want to highlight. You can see highlighted in yellow, the Professional Development Needs Assessment Analysis. We administer a Professional Development Needs Assessment to all of our certified staff, pre-K through 12, and we take those results and the questions that you can kind of see, at least highlighted, include those bulleted pieces there, which include topics that employees want to focus on. We ask specific questions by level, pre-K elementary, middle school, and high school, that are more topic or content-specific. We ask questions about technology inquiries, as well as if there are any other areas that are not included on the survey. And so when you take that theme, you can kind of see left to right, and that left column was the K through 5, pre-K through 5, some of the additional topics that folks were wanting us to be able to spend time, resources, and commit to. Middle column was middle school, and the right-hand column was high school. And so you can see there are a lot of different topics, especially when you have a large school district. There are a lot of different people who have a lot of different ideas. So our task is to be able to kind of work through all those and find our big focus, our big rocks for the year. As well as when we get into kind of the second part, this goes back to our school improvement plans, and so both the creation and the implementation of that. So when we look at school improvement plans, there are a few things that are important to note. One is that we create them annually, and we monitor those throughout the year through various roundtable exercises in which we have through Central Office. It is fully aligned to MSIP 6. It also outlines our planning processes, collaborative efforts, and it focuses on the academic preparation and the wellbeing, social-emotional piece of each student. It also focuses and collects various types of data, mostly quantitative, but there are some pieces that are qualitative in nature. And so as we think through those school improvement plan goals, it's important to just take a moment to highlight, well, what were those goals last year, and then also, what are the goals moving forward into the '23, '24 school year? So I just try to highlight these by level, not necessarily by school, and you'll find there are different themes that emerge depending on the level that you're talking about. So at the pre-K, there's a lot about sense of belonging, identified students who need tiered supports, and there's obviously a very heavy emphasis on pre-kindergarten types of skills and kindergarten readiness. At the elementary levels, you'll find more consistent themes, I think, between elementary and middle school and high. You'll find things like focusing on Tier 1 instruction, the attendance indicator of making sure that 90% or more of our kids are here 90% of the time, and also things like sense of belonging, making sure that students are engaged, as well as making sure they're also continuing to improve as readers. At the middle school level, all those things I said basically still apply. They also want to ensure collaborative efforts through PLC processes to ensure that kids who need help get academic help through Tier 2, multi-tiered systems of support processes, as well as looking at both ELA and math and their overall improvement with regards to their growth data on benchmarks, as well as their overall MAP and EOC data. High schools, all the things that were mentioned, plus ACT composite scores. Those are things that are out there. They were goals, and some of those do continue, obviously, to be goals. So the last piece here is how do we create this plan? We also create this plan through the implementation of it, and so for us, what we do is we take a look at our overall Professional Development Plan from last year. We take those needs assessments. We look at the school improvement plans, and we kind of move forward with drivers. And so you can see, again, at the early childhood level, when we start looking at, you know, the PD plans from last year, here were things that we focused on. You can see kind of lists in each of these next four slides, elementary, middle school, and high school. And so those were '22, '23 Professional Development Plan highlights. And so what I think's important is obviously bringing a plan to you here, is what does the '23, '24 plan look like? And so at the early childhood, after going through all their school improvement plans, you will find pieces like sense of belonging, professional learning communities, facilitating IEPs, because again, with early childhood special education serving approximately 50% of the kids at John Kerry and the satellite programs, all of our folks are also case managers for special education, so they do have to know how to be able to do that. So you'll find a renewed sense of making sure that special education processes are understood and followed. At the elementary level, you'll see things like S个小de, including zygophonics and phonemic awareness, reading success plans, so that highlights still the reading emphasis. For math, math fluency, number sense, those are things that our plans this year are specifically designed to be able to promote and implement, and then as well as professional learning communities, looking at data and making sure that we are collaborative in our processes for improvement. At the middle school level, you'll see professional learning communities. There will be a heavy emphasis on common formative assessments, getting people to look at data, to be able to discuss data, and to be able to take that information and to move forward by moving forward with improved instructional strategies and practices. Also, reading across the content, so reading does not go away. And then looking at MTSS, again, how do you help kids who are struggling, and what processes and schedules are in place at the middle schools, in which specifically to be able to help kids move into, you know, more of a grade-level expectation. At high school level, we have a lot of emphasis with regards to data and academic interventions, collaborative learning, the processes of co-teaching, professional learning communities, and ensuring that kids are engaged with regards to their studies also, which is not necessarily is on there, it just didn't make it onto this list, is also the ACT composite scores. And I know that later on in Consent Agenda, you'll have a topic specifically to that around an ACT prep course that'll be coming up. So everything costs money, and professional development is no exception to that rule, but I do think it's important to be able to break down a little bit of the financials so that everyone, you and the public, do understand that. And so when we look at the '22, '23 school year, you'll see overall roughly about $885,000 in all of the various buckets that are there. That includes subpay, extra-duty payments, benefits, purchase services, and materials. And then we used about 95.2% of our overall allocation. Getting to 100% is tough, because that just assumes that everything goes exactly the way that you expect it to, and we live in a time where not everything always goes the way we expect it to. And as we look at the '23, '24 plan, while it's reduced a little bit, and I make mention to that in terms of the board questions, which are available publicly on e-boards, it's still over $700,000, and so that money is, you know, put into those various buckets for use. When we think of quality professional development as part of the overall plan, I want to make sure we highlight just a few things, and that is, there are seven features that are research-based that specifically talk about quality PD. What are the things that we should be doing, and our professional development should represent that? So that includes being content-focused, includes incorporating active learning. We know that when student engagement is higher, kids learn better. Collaboration of teachers, we are really hitting that hard, using models of effective practices. We're not only doing that, we're also modeling that for our administrators, and our administrators are modeling that for our teachers. Having coaching and expert support. Having coaching and expert support, which we do offer consultants and others that do come in, partnerships, Washington University, and things of that nature. We offer feedback and reflection through walkthroughs that we're doing on a regular basis with all of our school administrators, and is of sustained duration, because we know that one session professional development generally does not work, and most things in life have to be of sustained duration if you're going to see results. And so this is, there's a lot of information on this one, but I'll just kind of highlight the left-hand column, which are Board of Education commitments, and the right-hand column, which are the district commitments to teachers. So the left-hand column just essentially outlines things that many times are financial or logistical, and the right-hand side focuses more on the things that we will specifically ensure that are the non-negotiables for teachers. So that's kind of highlights the two columns there. Getting into our calendar, you can see that annually we offer approximately 35 hours of professional development to our teachers. Might be a shade more, two hours, could be two to two and a half hours, depending on kind of what time you ultimately get started. But with regards to the calendar, we have at least 35 hours built in. And I do, I reference that because when you start taking a look at certification and what people need in order to be able to move from one certification level to another certification level, at the very bare bones minimum, if you look in the second row that says professional certification, you will see that, let me see if I can, I can't do that. It's, it does require 30 hours over four years. Obviously, we highlight 35 hours per year. So we don't struggle in terms of offering at least the bare bones basics minimum PD. Not only that, but even for people who get to career certification, they require 15 hours annually, and we're offering at least 35 hours annually. So we never struggle with people meeting their professional development criteria. And in the bottom right-hand corner, you'll notice that the only time that PD is ever really exempted, and not that you don't have to attend, but in terms of not having to count it, you have to have at least 10 years' experience, be National Board certified, and/or have an EDS or an EDD degree. And so that doesn't apply, the 10 years applies to a fair amount of people, but the EDS or EDD and the National Board certified does not apply to that many people in terms of the district. So the continued rationale there is that we expect everybody to participate in professional development, and we have a responsibility to offer that. So I thank you for your time and your attention to this. Again, just a reminder, it's simply a board review. But I'll take any questions that you may have.
Dr. Smith, the exception is 10 years' experience and the EDD.
Yes, it's two or the, yeah. Yes, so two of the three. So usually if someone has 10 or more years, you could have, I guess, an EDD and be National Board certified, but generally it's going to take a few years for people to hone their practice. Yeah, you're welcome.
One other question. First time I heard the word tonight. Could you tell me briefly what Sonde is?
Sure. It's a, it's a phonics system. It's a resource that we're using at the elementary level.
Say no more. That makes my heart beat.
It's designed to be able to help support some of the phonics instruction that our kids have, and we know, especially for kids who are English language learners, which we have a fair percentage of, it's just a good, solid instructional strategy. It helps kids break down words.
Okay. Well, thank you. There are, I'm glad you mentioned there are many, many questions from the board on our e-boards, so the public can read those if they would like to.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Next up is Prop S update, Steve Wendell.
Good evening, Board of Education. My name is Steve Wendell, and I'm the Melville Construction Manager, and I'll be presenting tonight Prop S update. This is the slide that we show each month, and we're happy to add another project completed, onto the completed list. The Hegeman security entrance is, is now done. I'll have a slide with some photos a little bit later, but that's, so we're building our completed list up a little bit. Beerbaum Elementary Phase One, which was the front entrance, the nurses, the office, the, the teacher's lounge and, and workroom, et cetera. That is nearing completion. We're very close since the last board meeting. The site work is now complete, the concrete drive, the asphalt parking area, outdoor landscaping, and the boiler is all done. And we've done a final walkthrough with the contractor. We identified some items that still need some attention, and they're about halfway complete with that list. So we hope that in the next month that we can check this one off. But the good news is all of those areas are in use, and they're all functioning very well. Beerbaum Elementary Phase Two, so just at the back of the same school, we're doing an expansion. That's going to be classrooms, storm shelter, new library, et cetera. So we've just recently mobilized. We just started the demo work around the last board meeting. A demo is now complete. I've got a photo of kind of before and after with the library now being gone. So it's a pretty, a pretty different site in the back of the school now. We've also completed the building permit process. And then over the next month, we'll be executing the playground relocation, the footings on the new building, and then starting on the utility work. So they'll be, we're done taking the old down, and we're going to start reconstructing now. The Melville High Ballfields, both softball and baseball. So our construction with the contractor is complete. They also have a little punch list that they're virtually done with. And then over the next month or two, the facilities group will be putting up some perimeter fencing for, to secure the area and an entrance gate. And we also need to do an outfield fence for the softball field. The good news is the softball field is in use now. I think they've played a, at least a couple of times this week already, so you guys can, at your leisure, head on out and take a look at the new ballfields. They look really good. And then the baseball will start play in the spring. Hegeman Elementary is the one we're checking off the list. We're finished with the security vestibule, the security entrance with the security window, and also the ADA access in the back of the school to the playground. At Point Elementary, we did, the contractor mobilized a little over a month ago. They have also completed their demo. They've started their ADA access scope at the back of that school. It's not quite complete. And they've started on the, the framing of the new door entrance and some of their plumbing work. But in general, they're doing very well, and they're on track for a January 24 completion on schedule. And then the rest of the outlook for the remaining Prop S jobs. Melville High School and John Kerry were bundled together in a package that we awarded to Aspire Construction. They have started at both schools now, so by next month, I hope to bring some progress photos so everybody can see how they're, how we're doing there. The next package after that, Berkeley, Beasley, and Fordor will be bundled together, and we're working on that design right now, and we hope to bid that out in November. About a month afterwards, we'll be following with Woolwind and Oakville Middle School, which will also be bundled together. We hope to bid that by December. In January, a month after that, we hope to bid Mosaic. And then last but not least, Trout Wine and Washington will be following bidding in the spring, and we hope to start construction on those in the summer of '24. And then final slide is the finances, and then I'll pause if anyone has any questions. No? All right. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Steve. Okay. Moving on to 2900 LeMay Ferry, Phase One, Mike Gegg.
Good evening, Board of Education. My name is Mike Gegg, Director of Facilities. Tonight I'll be presenting alterations, renovations for Phase One construction of the new administration center at 2900 LeMay Ferry Road. The building will serve as a future Melville Administration Center, which will house multiple departments. We solicited bids for this project, and we had a great turnout. We had six contractors turn in bids. This will be paid far through the Facilities Department capital budget, and I'd like to make a recommendation to approve the lowest qualified bid submitted by Walk Door Construction Services in the amount of $4,958,705, which includes contingency and professional fees, as well as $155,000 in allowance.
You have a question?
Any questions?
Oh, no question? Okay. Can I get a motion to approve? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, strategic plan update, safety, Dr. DeKemper.
Good evening, Board of Education. My name is Chad DeKemper. I am the Assistant Superintendent of Elementary Schools. And the purpose of my presentation tonight is to review the progress we are making towards fulfilling the goals in the strategic plan regarding safety and facilities. In tonight's presentation, I'll be focusing on front entrances, air quality, traffic control, perimeter safety, ADA accessibility, classroom safety, updating of restrooms. Speaking with Mike Gegg, Director of Facilities, prior to the meeting, and, and our memory and to our knowledge, there has never been this scale of construction and the addition of safety features to our schools. And I would argue to you that that is momentum. So thank you to Mike and his team. Thank you to you. Thank you to the community for making this possible. And you will notice that there is some alignment between my presentation and Steve Wendell's, our construction manager. This is mandated by the strategic plan. So the goals remain the same, and the strategic plan would not be possible without the passage of Prop S. So you'll see that alignment. When it comes to safety entrances, as Steve had mentioned, we have completed a number of our schools, and there are two schools, actually three that are in progress. Before the beginning of next school year, all of our schools will either be completed or in progress. There is one variation between my presentation and Steve's. We did spend some considerable time talking about whether or not we could begin Mosaic early. We have a great plan for Mosaic Elementary. We believe that we could start sooner than summer, but it's appropriate to wait so that there is minimal disruption to instruction, and the structure and size of that school gives us pause on beginning of school. And as you can see, Beerbaum has already found many creative uses for their new space, and it's awesome to walk in to, to see students learning and utilizing that space, which not only protects them, but motivates them. In regards to improved air quality, we have continued to complete HVAC projects that were prioritized and outlined through our capital plan. Continue with our cyclical asbestos testing. But I really want to highlight and give credit to Russ Suda, Mike Gegg, and the facilities team. They partnered with the Department of Health and Senior Services and have obtained roughly $1.2 million in air purifiers to the district in no cost. And there's an example of a unit by our door. So not only was it impressive to receive these purifiers, but it was a lot of effort on the facilities team to make sure that they were installed in quick fashion and are up and moving throughout the district. We've continued to work on traffic flow. Some of these are smaller efforts, like at Point Elementary, where we have restriped the parking lot, and a team of us met, the principal Debbie Reed, to take a look at what we could do to minimize traffic from backing up Telegraph Road. That new system seems to be working appropriately. And as mentioned in previous board presentations, Mosaic's new parking lot is very nice and, and serving its purpose. So that's an indication of what we can do, and we prioritize with the resources that we have. We're also continuing to address perimeter safety. This really extends to beyond the school itself, too. And so fencing has been added, as Steve mentioned, but we're also looking at adding additional fencing this year, including at Point Elementary, we're considering a gate like what you see, border, that was recently installed. And we believe that with the added green space at Mosaic Elementary, it may be appropriate to add some fencing between the field and the wood line, just to ensure student safety due to the topography in that area. Paul Westbrook, Director of IT, and his team, who worked very hard once again throughout the summer. They are near completion, the latest phase of security cameras that take, that have, they continue to be installed at Blades Elementary, Oakville Elementary, Rogers, Point. And we're continuing to expand safety film throughout the district. Our goal is to have the ground level of all schools safety film on the glass by the start of the next school year. So we're working very hard to accomplish that, and that work continues today. ADA accessibility is also a goal within the strategic plan. You can see examples here of the Hegeman work that Steve referenced that is complete and looks very nice. And I was just at Point Elementary yesterday, and the new accessible ramp really opens up an entire new wing of the school that is accessible for entrance and exit. It is a combination of both steps and a ramp. That work is taking place very quickly outside of the school. Classroom safety is a, is a high priority. So in small ways, we're replacing outdated furniture. There's a cyclical furniture schedule that schools participate in. And we are prioritizing, anytime we hear that a classroom door is to be repaired, support orders are given careful attention by Mike and Joe Gibson, our foreman, doing what we can to respond to those work orders as quickly as they come in. Another thing that we've really stepped up our efforts on is the relabeling of doors and exits to make sure that we have proper numbers and that they are, they rotate in the fashion that is recommended by our, our partners in St. Louis County Department. So you'll see numbering on inside and outside of doors. We continue to work on that. And finally, we continue to update restrooms. This is an example of the new Beerbaum Elementary School restrooms. We wish they all looked as beautiful. And so in that spirit, we will continue to prioritize repair and upgrading of restrooms, probably beyond Prop S. But I think Prop S really gave us a great start and has shown us what we can do. We seek to upgrade these facilities. With that, I'll say thank you and answer any questions that you have.
So much better. No, thank you for the update. We appreciate it. We want to know when we get a, a private tour. All right. Next is action items by consent. Does anyone need to poll anything?
Should we poll H? The buzz route, because it never got put to e-boards before the meeting.
Is it up there now?
No, it's not. Is it in the body now?
It is.
Okay. Ah, there it is. Well, it's not full then.
Okay, do you want to look over it before we approve?
We're good.
All right. If I could please get a motion to approve action items A through I.
Summude.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven, zero. That's a long one. Okay, communications. Do we have anybody signed up? All right. Authorization of closed session.
Motion to enter a closed session meeting for the purpose of reading of minutes of previous meetings and corrections and approval of same and/or other items under the Missouri revised statute 610.021 subsections 1 through 21 and 610.022 subsections 1 through 6, hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting particular employees, section 610.0213, and individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employment or applications for employment, section 610.02113.
Okay. Scott?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Tori?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Gene?
Yes.
Grace?
Yes.
Peggy, yes. Okay, if I could please get a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven, zero. All right. We will reconvene in about five minutes for close.